I'm at the 5:30 mark. So we apologize to you for being invited late. We have come to the business to conduct the debate. We thank you for your patience. We always start our meeting with those who are speaking to agenda items. And this evening, we do not have them. So we're going to go right into our agenda. Excuse me, we have an agenda. We don't have public committees, but we do have a special presentation this evening. And it's good news. It's good news for our growth, for advancement in our Pinedale Police Department. Our chief is here with us tonight. And we may have others in the law enforcement that will be here with us. In reference to Arkansas Law Enforcement Accreditation Program. Our department has been making preparations to be accredited on the Tier Two level. And I think we have achieved that level of accreditation. I think Chief Richardson is here. And I want to ask her if she'll come down. And she can take it from here with the presentation of the Arkansas Law Enforcement Accreditation. That's the LEAP program. Tier Two, and I think we'll be moving towards Tier One next. But that's advancing our police department here in my view. Let's get going.
This is Mr. Jackie Davis. Jackie Davis is a retired Arkansas Police Chief.
Chief.
And he is with the Arkansas Association of Chiefs of Police. And he runs the accreditation program. And he guides us in how we should be moving in our, in our department in order to reach a level of excellence that we had before. So he is here to present us with our first tier award. And we have been working on this since I was promoted to chief. I promised the city this the same day I was promoted. And today is the day. We were actually awarded this accreditation February 22nd. And we wanted to present it to the council here tonight. Because a lot of the changes that had to be made had to come through this council. I had to have your votes to change the policy. I had to have your votes to pay the money. It came with the help of the members of this council. We wanted to get heard.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. As stated, my name is Jackie Davis. I'm a retired police chief and the A.D., or Accreditation Director, for Arkansas Association Chiefs' Police. A little over 10 years ago, a lot of administrators from the Chiefs Association collaborated with the municipal league in order to come up with model policies and start a process in order to do an accreditation. The model policies that you have received or have adopted, that you adopted a few weeks ago, were paid for and that by the municipal league. So if they're your defense fund, they are gladly glad that you got these policies. So they will help you. We do open and ask that, as Chief Richardson stated, she is desiring to go to Tier One, which is going to be a higher standard. It does take a little bit of time. It's going to take a little bit of patience. And it may take some funding. Won't be a great amount, but it is a process that they will work through in order to do it. But we are proud to present the certificate to Chief Richardson from the Arkansas Association Chiefs.
We've got a good talking room this evening. Angela. I don't know if I'll turn around so someone can get a good picture of us from there. I think that'll make a good photo. I think I'll come down there with you. I would have wanted to dress if I had gone in.
Yes, ma'am.
Public safety member.
Public safety.
Councilmember.
Councilmember.
Public safety.
Yeah, I know you said. I like it here.
I did show my offices to a high school inspector. Thank you so much for being with us. And thank you for all you do for this department. Chief Richardson, we want you to know that you are appreciated. And we look forward to our department advancing to that next level. And if it takes additional money, just let us know. And we'll do our best to make it happen. Because we want to continue to advance as we protect and serve this beautiful community of Pinedale, Arkansas. Our meeting is now called order. Our invocation will be made preceded by Reverend Julius McGee here. If he's there, I'm sorry, we want to call Reverend Robert Thompson. Thomas. I'm sorry, Robert Thomas. I was told Thompson, that we went to high school together. So I know that's not, that's Thomas. Will you stand for the invocation? And we may stand for the place of the meeting. The court. I was told Thompson, that we went to high school together. So I know that's not, that's Thomas. Will you stand for the invocation? And we may stand for the place of the meeting.
Scripture reading this evening will come from Colossians. The third chapter, verse 13 and verse 14, reads in this manner. Forbidding one another and forgiving one another. If any man hath a quarrel against any, even as Christ forgives you, so also do ye. And above all these things, put on charity, which is the bond of perfumeness. Let us pray. Our Father, our heavenly Father, Master, we come this evening to say, oh, God, we thank you, son. Thank you for last night's slumber and sleep. We ask this evening of Master that you look down upon the council, touch minds and hearts, Master, that we will conduct the business that will be pleasing unto you. Master, we ask of God that in the city, things is happening. Murder is showing up, our young kids is killing one another. Master, we need you to put upon our hearts and our spirits the solution to our, our problem. Master, we ask of God that you bless each and every one here today that's under the sound of my weak and my friends of yours. Touch your heavenly Father as only as you can. And Master, if ever was a fire in that, Pine Bluff needs you. We need you right now. And Master, you say, "Ask," and it shall be given. So, Master, I ask, and we know that it will be done. It is in the mighty name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the vision of liberty and justice for all. At this time, we have our roll call by our seat. Councilmember Mayes.
Here.
Councilmember Holcomb.
Here.
Councilmember Brown Jr.
Here.
Councilmember Mikey.
Here.
Councilmember Brown Senior. Councilmember Shayer.
Here.
Councilmember Frazier.
Here.
Councilmember Bryson.
Here.
Councilmember Bronson is on Zoom. And Councilmember Brown Senior.
Frazier.
Councilmember Frazier is on Zoom. Brown Senior not here.
Brown Senior.
Oh, I said Bryson. I said Brown Senior. Okay, so, um, seven. Pardon the room, six present. You all should have a copy of the.
So, room, second.
It's the room in property second. Minutes we approve as soon as. How in favor, let it be known by saying.
Aye.
Minutes approved. Next, we'll move into our committee reports. Our first report will come from Councilmember Mayes, with Councilmember Brown Jr. substituting voice in newness.
Thank you, Mayor. What is the meaning of May's support this council meeting? Tonight being on five budget adjustments to consider. First budget adjustment is coming from all departments. It's the 2023 carryover budget adjustment to 2024. That total budget adjustment is seventeen million, six hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-six cents. I move that we approve this budget adjustment.
It's the property move and second, that we approve the 2023 carryover budget adjustment in the amount of seventeen million, six hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-six cents. The floor is open for discussion. Any questions? Hearing non, all in favor of this budget adjustment, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed, budget adjustment approved.
Next budget adjustment is coming from 2017 sales tax. This is additional 2024 expenses. The total budget adjustment comes to one hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and five dollars. I move that we approve this budget adjustment.
Second.
It's the property move and second, that we approve a budget adjustment coming from 2017 sales tax for additional 2024 expenses in the amount of one hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and five dollars. The floor is open for discussion. Questions? Hearing non, all in favor of this budget adjustment, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, budget adjustment approved.
Next budget adjustment is coming from the police department. It's for progressive state neighborhood grant, Arkansas Highway Safety Mini Step Grant, and also the 2023 JAD grant. The total budget adjustment is one hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars. I move that we approve this budget.
Second.
It's the property move and second, that we have accepted a budget adjustment coming from the police department for the progressive state neighborhood grant, the Arkansas Highway Safety Mini Step Grant, and the 2023 JAD grant in the amount of one hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars. The floor is open for discussion. Any questions? Hearing non, all in favor of this budget adjustment, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, budget adjustment approved.
Fourth budget adjustment is coming from the ARP funds. It's for 2023 carryover budget adjustment to 2024. The total budget adjustment is three million, nine hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty cents. I move that we approve this budget adjustment.
Second.
It's the property move and second, that a budget adjustment coming from the ARP funds from the 2023 carryover in the amount of three million, nine hundred, ten thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty cents, basically for the Kansas Street Main Course or the Arkansas River being approved. The floor is open for discussion. Any questions? Hearing non, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, budget adjustment approved.
This is the final budget adjustment. It's coming from all departments. It's for 2023 year-end budget adjustment. Total budget adjustment is seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-five cents. I move that we approve this budget adjustment.
Second.
It's the property move and, move the property second, that the carryover money for the year-end 2023 budget adjustment in the amount of seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents. The floor is open for discussion. Any questions? Hearing non, all in favor of this budget adjustment, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, budget adjustment approved.
Mayor, it concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Orders and resolutions, Councilmember Mayes. Councilmember Holcomb substituting.
Thank you, Mayor. We have one in hiding. It's up for the second move. And that concludes.
Ooh. Thank you, Councilmember Holcomb. Economic and Community Development, Councilmember Brown Senior not here. Public Health and Welfare, Councilmember Frazier.
Hi, Mayor. Public Health and Welfare will be on March 14th at its regular scheduled time, 11:00 a.m. So that is all that I have. That concludes my report.
And that was 11:00 a.m. on March.
On March 14th. Be a Zoom.
Okay, all Zoom, not hybrid. Thank you so much, Councilmember Frazier. Our next report will come from Councilmember Shayer, Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor. Public Works met today earlier. During that meeting, we discussed an ordinance permitting Michael Boykin doing business with Red E. Exchangeers to do business with the city. We will put that on next week, our next meeting's agenda. And it passed with a, I mean, moved to the full council with a due pass. And that concludes my report.
And everybody understand, that is allowing him to, to be on the title of senior judge once that comes to the council. Thank you, Councilmember Shayer, for that report. Development and Planning, Councilmember Mikey.
Lieutenant May is not there since our last meeting. However, our normal meeting date is tomorrow at 1:00 in the old city council chambers. That concludes my report there.
Okay, will that be hybrid as well? To the center as well?
Yeah, that'll be hybrid, Zoom and in person.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's the normal.
Thank you, Councilmember Mikey.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Now, my clerk was here this election day. So let me, let me see, we may postpone it, Madam May. It's not urgent that we meet on tomorrow. So we may look at the meeting the following week. Since, since many people, myself, the clerks, and quite a few of the committee members are, will be.
He wants to just make sure that it has time to go to the department. We don't want to do any trying to interrupt that schedule.
So let's postpone.
We'll look to hear from you.
I will sign a clerk of good time. Most likely, it'll be that following week, next two, most likely, at 1:00. But I'll, I'll communicate with the clerk and get something out to you about it.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, thank you, ma'am. That concludes my report.
Okay, so with that meeting being canceled, just make sure you don't have any excuses for the other people.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
All right. Traffic and Aviation, Councilmember Bronson.
Thank you, Mayor. Traffic and Aviation met on Thursday, February 29th at 1:30 p.m. in the old city council chambers. What was discussed was, we are actually making amendments to the speed hump ordinance to make it more feasible for residents who are asking for speed humps in their area. We have changed some of that language and we have sent it to the city attorneys for review. And we should have that back to present to the council on the next council meeting. We also met and writer field, Mr. Doug Hill. We will be having the 26 annual Black Pilots coming back to Pinedale during the morning of the weekend. So they want to let everyone know that that event will be taking place again. They have chose Pinedale to come back and do this event. So want to make sure that the city shows up and that we go out and support them in this effort. The last thing is, we have a couple of people asked for some signs for their churches and businesses. And we're working with Mr. Larry Reynolds to get that taken care of as well. And that concludes my report there.
Thank you, Councilmember Bronson.
Mayor, before you go on to the next report.
Councilmember Frazier.
I just wanted to let Councilmember Bronson know that I did receive the ordinance back, speed hump ordinance back from Joe, and it looks good though. So I just wanted to let her know that, that we got it all changed in there. And we will definitely have it for the next city council meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Frazier, for helping with that.
Can we work, can we work?
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Bronson and Frazier. Administration Committee Report, Councilmember Holcomb.
Thank you, Mayor. The Administration Committee meeting is normally held on the second Tuesday of each month. If possible, if I can change that on this month to next Monday, the eleventh, at 1:30. That's missing. I see your office. Yeah, I can call your office. I can call your office tomorrow. Or Wednesday.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We'll look at it Monday, the eleventh. Well, we'll work on that.
Okay.
We'll leave it Monday, the eleventh.
Possibly Monday, the eleventh, with the confirmation on that day. Thank you so much.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Holcomb. Public Safety, Councilmember Bration.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next meeting will be on Wednesday, March 6th at 1:30, and that will be hybrid. Can you hear me? Okay. So Monday, I'm sorry, it'll be Wednesday, March 6th, 1:30 p.m. in the old council chambers. And that will be hybrid meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Bration.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know, but I have these three announcements. The biggest announcement I have is a health, a health career fair. Health Care Career Fair. And this is a health, a career fair, I think, for healthcare jobs. Economic and Community Development Department will hold a healthcare career fair Wednesday, March 13th, at the Pinedale Convention Center from 1:00 a.m. to 10, I'm sorry, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. For more information, contact Cynthia Anderson at the Economic and Community Development Department. So that's a healthcare career fair, March 13th. Spring Break Youth Tennis Camp will be held March 12th through the 22nd, from 9:00 a.m. until 11:00 a.m. at the Blue Tennis Center. Water and light snacks will be provided. For more information, contact Pinedale Parks and Recreation. Let's remember that our next week is Transit Appreciation Week. And Transit Appreciation Day is March 18th. Let's also remember that March is Women's History Month. So we're celebrating women the entire month of March. We have annual Women's History Celebration on last Sunday, and it was phenomenal. So let's celebrate women all month, all month of March. Those are our announcements for this evening. Then we'll go into the closed audiences. We have another announcement, I'm sorry.
Just one. The Pinedale High School basketball team will be going to the championship. I think it's Friday.
Championship.
It's Bay Championship. This Friday, is it this Friday or this Friday? So I wanted to make sure.
Thank you. And there is a celebration, I believe, Twins Day at Pinedale High School for that, for that team. So thanks for remembering that. Who can tell me whether it's a championship? Is Hot Springs last year or is it this year? Is Hot Springs in here this year? So let's go in large numbers to support our Pinedale High School winning basketball team. We're so proud. Let's join. So Coach Williams and his dad, I mean, that's, that's Dixon. Billy Dixon and his dad for the fine work that they did. Okay, any other announcements are marked next.
It's ma'am, Madam May, there. University of Arkansas is doing their spring fling this Saturday at the Saracen Landings. It's the culmination of the year-long, 100th season, 100th year celebration for the university. They want everybody to come out and join. And it's free reason that we have entertainment, including festivities. Now, the park is going to be near Regional Park, near the softball field. They will shuttle people to Saracen Landing. But that timeframe is 11:00 to 2:00 on March 9th.
Very good. Thank you so much. Any other announcements? Thank you for that. Those are our announcements for this evening. Moving to our closed audiences and resolutions, Councilmember Holcomb.
An ordinance amended the zoning code of the City of Pinedale, Arkansas to enact regulations governing the location of small box retail stores in the City of Pinedale, Arkansas, and for related purposes, up for assembly.
An ordinance amended the zoning code of the City of Pinedale, Arkansas to enact regulations determining the location of small box retail stores in the City of Pinedale, Arkansas, and for related purposes.
Place it on the camera.
And we've already done our announcements. I'm sorry.
A motion for the. Second.
The motion is second, but we are. At this time, we'll have our comments, the comments for our general items. We have our first speaker, our manager, Amanda Smith. My topic is local civic concerns. Amanda Smith.
Good evening.
Good evening, all of us.
Okay, that was the, you're the only speaker, and we have more.
The only speaker. You said the only speaker. We have one more speaker. I spoke to Attorney Anne Scott. I have to call the mayor's office, the M.A. in the mayor's office.
What's your question?
You said the only speaker.
No, 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 I personally. But I said only, it's fresh, we have three. So this is our person.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir.
Great. Psalms 127 and 1, International Standard Version. Unless the Lord builds the house, its builders labors uselessly. Unless the Lord guards the city, its security forces keep watch uselessly. I am Amanda Smith, and I thank you for the opportunity to express the concerns of citizens here in the great city of Pine Bluff. On February the 6th, 2024, and 28th and fir, I hit a pothole, a severely deep pothole which caused over fifteen hundred dollars worth of damages to my vehicle. And I went on to contact the mayor's office. And I was informed by staff that I, that an email would be sent to the street department. And the city attorney or the street department would contact me. While I made numerous calls, and up until February the 16th, 2024, I did not hear from anyone. I made a follow-up call on February the 16th, 2024. And then I did receive a call from the city attorney. And at that time, we discussed the letter that I received February the 15th discussing the torn immunity, which prevents the city from being liable for damages to citizens' vehicles. As of today, I still have not received a call from the department head of the street department, Mr. Thomas Raymond, or the mayor. The mayor is responsible for making sure that the department heads fulfill their job duties. However, how many cars must be wrecked and severely damaged before ongoing plans are implemented to fix these hazardous streets? How can citizens expect to go for Pine Bluff, as the slogan is of this city spoken by our leader, the mayor, when citizens' basic needs of street safety are blatantly being denied and overlooked? How long? How long will we go back to Pineville before leadership decides to go forward? If Jesus called Lazarus to come forward and he was dead, shouldn't we as citizens follow those leaders that call us to come forward, who will fight for us and demand what is right as we go forward in the eyes of God? You want citizens to cast our votes, but you won't cast your concern over our needs. You ask for our votes, and we demand your service without wavering or prejudice. If the city of Pineville hazardous streets are repaired with taxpayers' dollars, there will not be any damages to citizens' vehicles, then the city officials would not have to hide behind toward identity to avoid liability, liability of fixing our cars if the streets of Pineville damage daily. Some city officials drive city cars so they're easily repaired because they're city employees. However, citizens, we have to repair our own vehicles through car insurance or bear the burden of spending monies out of our pocket that could be allocated to help our families in way of life even better. Performance reflects leadership. An empty wagon makes a lot of noise, and so do they who make mean promises yet fall short in bringing them to pass. I, as a citizen, Emmanuel Miller, and other citizens, extend a special heartfelt thank you to Stephen Mays Senior and Glenn Brown Senior. As a result of our reaching out to these productive aldermen with their lending ears and forward vision of better representation of office and government, common city citizen assistance was provided, resulting in the street department being contacted immediately to repair this severe pothole. This high level of diligence by these aldermen, Glenn Brown Senior and Steve May Senior, resulted in a pothole at twenty-eighth and fir being properly filled is this type of make things happen leadership we need to see in all our elected city officials. We want our city government leadership to possess the characteristics of producers of change, not shareholders. We want our leaders to lead through service, and again, I say, performance reflects leadership. Proverbs twenty-one, verse one through two, New International Version, says, "In the Lord's hand, the kings, those in authority, partner the stream of water that challenges towards all who please him. A person may think their own ways are right, but the Lord weighs the heart. To do what is right and just is more acceptable, acceptable to the Lord than sacrifice. Everything king will be revealed. As you go and vote, pray and seek God's direction. Remember, who returns citizen calls? Who listens and addresses every need, no matter how minor they may seem or greater? Don't avoid us after they are elected, and who serves us selflessly on the street safety concerns of Pineville. Don't vote name, female or male, vote integrity, honesty, and for the individual who will not compromise our safety and whose heart is for the people." We don't want no ulterior motives, no hidden agendas, no guilty lucre. Citizens are important enough to cast a vote. Yet citizens are not important enough to be fully representative in the town.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Your time has gone by twice.
Okay.
You've given twice as much time.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I got one more. And Lazarus come forward, and let the Lord thy God will.
No, you may not. No, you may not.
And the Lord thy God will establish thy people to reside with the people, say of Pineville to do what's right in the eyes of the Lord. Now roll away the stone and let the new Lazarus.
I will tell you that I was apprised of your situation. I'm sorry that you feel the way you do. I can't return every single phone call, although I don't shirk that responsibility. I do work through my office staff. Mrs. Hall gave a press, we had this situation. I did check with the street department and Mrs. Hall as we followed through that process to make sure that that pothole was repaired. And I did, I was informed also that the city attorney's office had communicated with you. We are serious about the business of repairing and also communicating with our citizens. So we're sorry about your experience, but there are just some things the city cannot do. And to our community, it's like we're covered by them, we're not hiding. It's just the way it is in this city and every other city in America. We are doing our best to shore up our streets, and we're going to do an even more effective job as we move forward. We promise you that. Thank you so very much. Our next speaker is Keon Fayer, and Keon Fayer is speaking to the topic, public safety uses.
Lovely evening to the standing members of the city council of Pineville. I come here in the name of the creator, the most sacred God alive, with all honors to our line of heirs. As I am a man with all rights and doubt, I go by. Keon Fayer, you may address me as such moving forward. I stand before thee today as a concerned native of Pineville to address matters of the utmost importance regarding the conduct of public servants entrusted with the care of our city. It is with heavy hearts that I bring forth evidence of violations and breaches of duty that directly impact the well-being and trust of the people of Pineville. Recent events have shed lights on actions taken by individuals in positions of authority who have failed to uphold their obligations to the people they serve. These violations span a range of areas from ethical misconduct to negligence in fulfilling their duties, all of which significant repercussions to our community. I would like to draw attention to specific instances. The first instance being breach of duty. One, it has come to our attention that several, if not all, public servants are incompetent in their duties which violates the people's trust, breaching their oath. To be clear, public servants have a duty to know or have known. Therefore, ignorance of the law is no excuse. The blindly and lying habitual system needs to end. The second violation deals with failure to address critical infrastructure issues. One, it's come to our attention that reports of mold in the common area of the court building located on Third Street here in Pineville, which is a major safety and insurance concern given the liability to the people. The third complaint, negligence of community needs. One, it has come to our attention that several locations have gross, excuse me, gross flooding, which is being neglected. I spoke personally with Councilwoman Bronson about fifty-two weeks ago in regards to solutions on a matter of dealing with the flooding in the community. Two, it has come to our attention that several reports of several locations have gross safety issues with failure to provide crosswalks, sidewalks, and other related metrics of operation. Close term member Terry Bradley and others have lost their lives in hit and runs due to the failure of these safety requirements. This brings light to the possible, possibilities of other claims that need to be addressed. Fourth complaint, concealment. It has come to our attention that several reports of public assets being sold privately or by private deed, such as the Southeast Middle School located on Ohio Street that was affirmed to be sold for sixteen dollars. In addition, concealment of Rule forty-four of Arkansas Civil Protection violation, which affirmed that the sealed or certificate must be accompanied official documents for them to be enforceable. We demand on this particular special matter transparency and, if possible, a report within the next sixty days placed upon the record. Two, it has come to our attention that several encounters with zoning permit issues on private property relating to agricultural practices, which violates the people's right to farm. Councilwoman Bronson, with zoning official Hill, along with District Conservation Martin, comprised a device to infringe upon the people's right to farm and home state exemption by concealing the fact that any rulemaking is void, as well as any restrictions related to agricultural practices. Public servants are prohibited from taking personal interest in private matters. It is clearly stated in Arkansas Constitution, Article two, Section three and twenty-one, Article twelve, Section seven, Article sixteen, Section one and three, and Article nineteen, Section one, which is the reason for the public reprimand and the claim on the bond of these said individuals who blatantly disregard the people's safety. To be clear, public servants that.
Is there a fair?
Yes, ma'am.
Your time has expired. We give you a few extra seconds there.
I appreciate them for the time, because I would like to be on the agenda with some of these concerns, because they're very serious. I called about a month ago to be placed on the agenda, Ms. Veronica. I was told no longer with you guys, who was supposed to place me on your agenda, but then I found out today when I called and talked to the city attorney, it's a different standard operating procedure for being placed on the agenda. Once again, I want to address these matters properly, to get them addressed immediately, but if that's all the time you have for me today, I would like to speak with some of you guys on the side if that's possible.
And before we place anything on the agenda, I think it might be good if we have maybe an immediate review, because some of the things that you are addressing are literally not true, and so I think we need to have a conversation, and maybe we can stop or work through some of these issues with you. We'll talk to the attorney in terms of you being placed on the agenda, but usually that would have to come through a committee. Everything that goes on the agenda goes through the committee.
I understand about that. Would there be a timeframe to get back with you, or just follow up with you guys?
What I would recommend that you do is to call our office, and we'll schedule a time to meet with you.
Thank you.
And we're not going to call you. We need you to call us.
That's not a problem. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Julius Leaver. Mr. Leaver, you will have two minutes as well.
Good evening, City Council, City Board, and residents, City Attorney, Mr. Leaver. I'm here today to make it clear, because the last time I spoke, it seemed like there was a problem with him after the fact on the internet, and some of my friends and colleagues wanted to hear what I was saying. I say it before, that for the disturbing of my religious property, my personal property, and my business property by three officers on the payroll of Pineville Police Department, without my permission, I was asking eighty thousand dollars for that. I was not even talking about when all the property, again, second time, was literally put in dumpsters and carried to a plane field. I had an admission in the mouth for that. But what I am concerned about today is the person who did it on February ninth was arrested on March fifteenth, and he had been wanted, a warrant had been issued for his arrest for one year. I inform you all that during the time of the warrant, where he was a wanted man, when I called the police, nine one one, they came out three or four occasions, they never even communicated with him. When I explained to them that I had a wanted deed on a separate piece of property that had not gone to judicial litigation, I had purchased that property twenty-four hours from that time, and was telling the officer, he had no right to be on this property, he's not able to destroy it on this property. She left. And when he came back again, which is another piece of property, he came back, I stood in front of the tractor, called the police, nine one one, and said, he's about to vulnerable to the tractor. Please come right now. They came eventually, and she still did not communicate with the person on the tractor. Had she communicated with the man on the tractor, she might have learned that he was a wanted man by the Pineville Police Department, perfectly, for the possession of heroin, the possession of cocaine, the possession of oxycodone, for the possession of K-2, for the possession of marijuana with intent sale with a gun. Not only one time, but they stopped him a year later, and he then had a gun. So I was standing in front of a man on the tractor about the vulnerable man who has the history of carrying a gun. And I said to you, as much as we want young people to stop carrying guns, as long as adults carry guns, young people won't carry guns.
You say it, ma'am.
I was close by saying, at least, at the very least, the city of Pineville was negligent in allowing a man who was wanted for one year for the charges of endangerment. And most of all, most of all, Mexico County has been prosecuted with a hundred and sixty-eight pages of legal documents. It was no process. It was not, he was let out, and it's going to get it back to him. So they might be suspicious of him, saying, if the police department perhaps had something to do with the dropping of these charges of a hundred and sixty-eight pages, and now in that, he would have an expedition for Kansas and expedition for Oklahoma, but selling the same goods. And then he was let out, and ninety percent of the gun get it back to him. It makes you wonder if he was paid to do what he did and to protect the city from any possible litigation, the private job movement. And I suggest you, as much as the police department was here, was tier one, tier two. If this is happening, we will. Our report, Pineville, has been for someone, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leaver. That is the last of our public speakers. We'll send you at our next meeting. Thank you so much.